All right. Welcome, everybody. We have lots of guests with us today. I would like to call the Concord Carlyle School Committee to order and note that we don't have to do roll call vote or or absence or present or anything like that. So we're all present and we have Ayesha with us as one of our Medco representatives. So starting out.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
And I would like to call the Concord School Committee to order. We are also all present. No need for attendance.
Perfect. All right. So we're going to start out with our CCHS student update and we've got Harry with us and Zariah and Felicity. Great. Welcome.
All right, let me just screen share really quickly. Um, so Felicity, I don't think you were able to be with us for the planning today, but you'll definitely help out, obviously. Okay, so we have a bit of a quick one. The first thing I wanted to touch on was the PSAT is happening this Saturday at the high school. And I just wanted to give a quick shout out. There's been really good communication, I feel like, from the guidance counselors and the school administration, not just to students, but also to the parents about like everything that's happening with it. They've just been really good at getting information out. So I think that has been really important for parents and stuff who might be a little bit uncertain about the process. And then the other big exciting news from the juniors and seniors is that parking spots are gonna, well, some parking spots, the leftover ones that we have are going to be given away in a raffle. And of course, priority is going to be given to the seniors, but juniors are eligible, which is very exciting. I'd heard a lot of good things about that today. A lot of people anxious to buy their raffle tickets.
This Wednesday, tomorrow, we're going to have our first early release day. And we're going to have a pickleball tournament from 11:30 to 12:45, which is fun. I know there's a lot of excitement surrounding the early release day because, you know, even me and my friends are planning to do something afterwards, which is always fun.
Yeah. And then this Friday, Green Team is having the annual Bike to School Day, which is something I've done in all two of the years that I've been in the high school and it's happened. I think it's really great to just like get outside and stuff and also you get community service for it, which makes it appealing to a lot of people. And then Felicity, you could probably talk much more about this than Zariah and I could, but next week I believe the play is starting.
Yeah, so the play is going to be October 20th to 22nd. I'm actually in the middle of Tech Week rehearsal right now, which is why I'm like kind of out of breath because I just ran into a hallway from the auditorium. Yeah, so we're all really excited for the play. And yeah, we hope that you all can come join us, the 20th to the 22nd at 7:00 PM. And you're gonna see a lot of long signs going up soon.
Yeah. And then also this past week, Student Senate approved a new club at the high school. It's the CCHS chapter of the Key Club, which is a national organization. They're focused primarily on like charity work and philanthropy. And they're also going to be hosting a number of different like opportunities for kids to get community service hours. So that should be exciting. It's been hugely successful already. I believe they have something like 60, 70 members, which is a lot for a new club at the high school. And then, oh, sorry, you can go.
I don't really have much to say on this, but freshmen have been elected for Student Senate and class government, and they're going to be attending meetings soon.
And then Felicity can talk about this too, but we've started working with the Student Senate on stuff for Spirit Week, which is really exciting.
Yeah, that includes like we're doing like the club windows thing, which I know is also like a really fun thing for all of the clubs. And especially because we've been talking so much about the new clubs, like this is also a chance for them to like decorate a window and everyone can learn. And there are some other activities. I think Powder Puff, right, Harry?
Yeah, we're gonna be doing Powder Puff and then also a larger spirit assembly, which is coming back this year. It's really exciting. And it's actually like built into the bell schedule for the day before Thanksgiving break. So it's gonna be obviously very well attended. And it's a great opportunity for us to kind of plan a bigger school-wide event. So yeah, I think that's really all we have this week unless Felicity, you had anything else you wanted to touch on?
I actually don't. My brain is still in theater. I'm sorry.
Can you tell us the name of the play?
Oh, I'm so sorry. It's scenes from The Secret in the Wings by Mary Zimmerman. It's like a collection of lesser-known Grimm's fairy tales. And oh, yeah, it's recommended for ages 12 plus because there are some dark parts, but it's, it's very, it's a very cool show. Yeah, we have a 10-foot staircase.
Oh, wow. Very exciting. Well, hopefully, some of us can join you and check out the play. And it's not a musical, right? It's a drama?
It is a drama, but there is, there are two songs, which is very exciting. So.
All right. Great. Thank you. Anyone have any questions for our students? No? We actually can't take questions from the public. I'm sorry. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Great. Um, okay. We do have public comment. And just so Erin can note for the notes, we have Domingo's just joined us. I'm just doing attendance. So so at this point, we have public comment. And so as a reminder to those of you on Zoom and those in the audience, we'll start in the room first and you have three minutes. This is a meeting in the public and not with the public. So if you have a public comment in the room and would like to make one, you can certainly come up to the microphone. All right, I see none in the room. Let me look online. And use the raise hand feature if you have a comment. Yes, Erin Fife, can please state your name and address?
Hi. You, my name is Erin Fife and my address is 174 Hill Street in Concord. I was looking at the policy discussion that will happen later today, the reading of the policy, and I missed the policy subcommittee meeting. But I had a question. There's been a lot of questions about how policy links to procedures in the school. And I was wondering if perhaps the school committee could work with the administration to sort of find a way on a website or something to link policies to what the procedures are as they're written in terms of what happens, like how they get interpreted and how they get enforced in the school, especially when it comes to things like student discipline and stuff like that. It would be nice to sort of be able to see those connections. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else in our online audience? Okay, have things seen over our hands? I'll turn it to Alexa to start this off.
Well, really, I'll be turning it to Lori, but today we want to welcome all of you folks from Willard. Dr. Hunter has asked you all here today because it seems like you guys have some special things to report out that you guys have done and we're really anxious to hear about it.
So invite Mr. Lucy up. They are indeed here to share out some special reading that they did and tell us about that. So welcome, everybody.
Thank you for inviting us to be with you. Highlight of the year of the last few years. We've had a good fortune at Willard to present to you. And this is the third fifth grade class over the last few years that presented each in a different way. I was thinking about one was in social studies, second was in science. Today it's ELA. What you'll find tonight is the work that these students have already engaged in is multifaceted. And so they'll be using the work that they did for the first month of school throughout the year. I'd like to introduce the teachers to begin with. Jess Edwards, our special educator, Marissa Moore, one of our classroom tutors, and Sharon Hayne, our ELA specialist, and Kate James, who is our classroom teacher. As you know, from our school group plan, we had a all-grade read this past year for fifth graders, all fifth graders. Each fifth grade teacher is using it in their own way. Today, Ms. James is going to be telling you a little bit about the process that was used to select the book, and then also how her class masterfully used it in a really authentically thoughtful way as a jumping off point about being the leaders of the Willard School. And so I'll ask Ms. James to give a little bit more to it. But thanks again for the opportunity to present these wonderful kids to you. Ms. James?
So we have a presentation of slides that our kids were very excited about. And here they are. So we, for the first time this year in fifth grade, we wanted something to bond the kids to start the year all together. And so we assigned summer reading for the first time for our rising fifth graders. And we thought a lot about the book that we would choose. The one we ended up choosing is called We're Not From Here by Jeff Rodkey. It is a science fiction novel about a group of people who are forced to leave Earth due to it becoming inhabitable and find somewhere else to try and assimilate into. We loved this book because it connects to our themes of leadership. We study leadership with the kids in the beginning of the year. And we, it connects to our social studies standards of colonization of North America, our science standards of climate change. And like Matt said, although we've started the year by reading and discussing it, it's something we'll come back to. It's engaging. It's really funny. And is although is a little bit above where we expect entering fifth graders to start the year, is something that all of the kids read and accessed over the summer, whether they listened to it, whether they read it with their families, or whether they read it on their own. Can I bump forward, I think, to?
So Erin is at home. She's very good.
Can I go back one slide? Thank you. So as part of our work, I was on last year on the K-12 literature review for cultural competency, where we studied some of the anti-bias and diversity work and had developed a tool to evaluate incoming books that kids would read. And this was one of the first books that we evaluated. It passed. And so we are excited to have started the year with this. And our kids want to explain to you a little bit about some of the work they've been doing, a little bit about some of the reading, and then some of the other books they've read that it's tied into in the beginning of the year. So Nellie, you want to come first, kiddo? And then we'll go to our next slide, Erin.
Okay. The rising fifth graders, the rising fifth graders were assigned a book called We're Not From Here to read over the summer. The book was about a human, about the human race moving to a new planet. It was nice to assign a book over the summer because more students would reach, would read over the summer, and students would join it, would enjoy it by reading it or listening to the book on Sora or by a family member. It was nice for everybody, including fifth grade teachers and Miss and Mr. Lucy to read and discuss with the class.
I'd love to.
Um, over the course of the school year so far, we have read the following books. Westlandia Night Flight about Amelia Earhart and the book Nelson Mandela. We've discussed all of their leadership qualities. Also, we wrote paragraphs to talk about those qualities. Wesley was creative. First, he invented his new sport. Second, he created a sundial. Amelia Earhart's qualities is are that she is brave and very responsible. Something that supports this fact is that she had to fly a plane from the USA to Ireland. Next, we had Nelson. His quality is that he is smart. For example, he was a lawyer. Another thing was when he was in prison, he taught fellow prisoners.
And then we'll go to our next slide as well.
The process of We're Not From Here began when we started reading the book over the over the summer. Then we looked through the book to choose what we thought was most important words and wrote about land. After that, we began discussing the book in little groups. Then we started discussing We're Not From Here with the whole class. Finally, we started writing about it and other leadership qualities in books we've read before, such as Westlandia Night Flight based on Amelia Earhart and Nelson Mandela.
We decided that land was non-binary because the author never said that they were a girl or a boy. So based on their actions in some parts of the story, they acted like, like a brother and sister relationship with Eli. We all think that land's gender didn't really matter because they could be a boy or a girl in some parts of the story. We think that lands, we think that the author intentionally decided not to include the land's gender because a boy or a girl can do all the things that land did.
One of the unusual parts about the book is land's gender is never specified throughout. It's not made a big deal of, and I did not notice it until my second read through. Did you guys notice when you first read, or did you not notice? Think about halfway through. And so it came up in our discussions when we started talking about land and you saying, turn up.
And We're Not From Here, the media was showing clips of war in that influenced the community that land and their family were violent. The media was trying to fool the community into thinking that land and their family were killers by only showing videos and pictures of violence and horror films. But some of the characters did not believe them. Land tried to make a better impression of their family by making the very kids laugh, which worked. A news reporter said that the they tried to kick a very kid. And even though that didn't happen, everyone agreed that the media was right. The media had a lot of influence over the community and the way they thought. Eventually, the media learned to show the right thing. The media can be joyful and dangerous even to kids on Earth.
In the book, We're Not From Here, the humans immigrated from Mars to June. In the story, the humans are the aliens. There are only four types of aliens on the planet at the time. They are traveling in biosuspension to June for 20 years. All the aliens also immigrated from their own planet, except for one species called the Krik. The Krik were always there. Second came the Aurora, and lastly, the Zuri came. But the Zuri were the government because they had the biggest population on the whole planet. By the time they got there, the government was revoted and they didn't want the humans there. Also, one of the species was extinct. The humans no longer wanted to live on there, on June, but they had nowhere to go. It was hard for the humans to adapt to living on June, and the aliens made it even harder for them because they wanted them to live.
We are writing about leadership qualities from We're Not From Here, Nelson Mandela, Night Flight, and Westlandia. We are deciding which one of these leader qualities we want in ourselves. Before we that we before that we had to read each book about each character in the book. Then we talked about the leadership qualities for each leader slash character in the books we read. After we did all of that, we took evidence from the text and showed that each leader had the quality we picked. After the planning, we worked on a four paragraph essay for each leader from the book we read. Up on the screen, there are some qualities we want from the leaders we read about.
We read about a bunch of different leaders, and then we decided which of their qualities the kids would want to take on in their own life. A lot of them said they would want Wesley's creativity or independence, Amelia Earhart's bravery or persistence, Nelson Mandela's thoughtfulness, dedication, patience. We liked that one of the popular ones from land was a sense of humor, which doesn't come up as a leader, but we think is very important.
So we addressed a lot of the ELA standards in all the work we've been doing. I'm just going to touch on a couple. When discussing and writing about each of the books, students were asked to go back and into the text and either directly cite evidence or summarize the information that they found by paraphrasing. In our discussions about character traits, students made comparisons about their leadership qualities, identifying similarities, while also commenting on differences across the characters and how each of these qualities could be a good leadership quality. Fifth graders have been working to independently read and comprehend a variety of genres during this process. Over the summer, the We're Not From Here book was an example of a literary text that's somewhat above grade level. And then in school, we read Night Flight and Nelson Mandela, which were both narrative nonfiction. And then Westlandia is fictional literature. In writing, students were asked to identify one trait that they believe make each character good leader. Students supported their points of view with information from the texts, including direct quotes, as well as personal reasons for their choosing those qualities. Our class participated in several discussions about each book, sharing and discussing opinions and questions. For We're Not From Here, we started with small group and then we gathered as a whole group. And for the other books, we sort of did the opposite and we started as a whole group and then broke off into small groups to talk about different things and answer questions. Students were expected to come to the groups prepared, having read the text and reread the text and listen to the text. Sometimes we had them write ideas and words on sticky notes and come to the the big group with those ideas to share out. And then lastly, our presentation today incorporates multimedia components and a visual display representing the incredible work that our fifth graders have done so far.
And this is a brand new project. Like we said, it's not something we've done before. And we were planning it sort of in a vacuum, having not met our rising fifth graders yet. And as thoughtfully as it was planned, the level of intelligence and creativity and deep thinking and kindness that they brought to their discussions and to their writing was extraordinary. And the way that they have thought about leadership's qualities and the way they are distracted by seeing themselves on the on-large screen is has been a really, really excellent start to the year. We're really excited to continue to touch on the book as we study narrative writing, as we study colonization, as we study climate change. But I think you guys should be really proud of yourselves with the way you start the year and the discussion and the writing that you did.
Well, this was really excellent. And all of you that came into the room, even just being in this room can be really intimidating. So the fact you came into us, you presented to us, and you're with us, we really appreciate you being with us tonight and to really see what's happening in our classrooms. So thank you for that. And really nice work by the teachers. And look, you can tell that you've all worked together collaboratively through this process. So we definitely appreciate that. Anyone have any other comments?
I want to ask all of you guys, raise your hand. Do you think this is a good idea? And kids who are going to be in fifth grade should read this book again and do the the summer reading? Who thinks so? Is it awesome? Even though it's summer and you like want to be at the beach or whatever. What I like about hearing from you guys, you guys, as well as the teachers, is you know, when you're like a parent watching your kid read a book, like a school book, you're like, oh, okay, they picked this book, whatever. And what is so cool is seeing why you pick a book and how thoughtful it is. It's not just like, eh, this is developmentally appropriate, or eh, this book stood the test of time, or whatever. You guys are really thoughtful and it intersects with so many different areas of the curriculum in ways I never would have like thought about. And I'm just so grateful to hear about that. And I'm, and I'm so proud of all you guys. It's really brave to be here. And thank you guys for coming. Anyone else?
Great work. Thank you so much for sharing it with us.
I've learned that you're all readers. I don't need to show a hand, but I think several.
You can do a mic.
Oh, yeah.
I know you're all readers. My question is, how many of you are writers? Because I think we'll all be looking forward to some of the material you write in the fifth grade and in the future. Thanks for being here tonight.
That's awesome. Are you good? Well, I'm gonna come see you in your classroom and visit you with the rest of your classmates. I am curious to hear more. But you did a great job here tonight and we're really, really glad you came because you took, they heard all this talk last spring about how we pick books and you've just brought it to light. And we're just so excited you were able to come and come out at night and dark and make make our meeting more fun. Exactly. Thank you. And you're welcome to stay with us for the rest of the night, but we'll also give you the opportunity to leave if you would like, in case you have homework to do.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Really good. Thank you. It was so great. Seriously.
It took a lot of courage. The way they were partnered up, the rooms that needed a little more.
Yeah.
We do what we do. I know. And they're on TV. They might not even, they can see themselves on TV. Oh, that's so great. Okay. All right. So moving on to our minutes, you should have received the minister, Erin, from September 13th and September 20th. So would I extend a motion to approve the minutes from September 13th and September 20th? We have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
In the minutes on the 13th, I'm not going to suggest the change, but it referred to a statement I apparently made about fiduciary goals. I think I meant fiduciary responsibilities.
Okay.
It was larger than goals. But again, not not significant for the minutes.
Okay. Anyone else?
Thank you, Erin, for putting them together.
Yep. All right. And we can just take a vote on those. It seems odd to be voting because we're all in person. I'm ready to roll call. And now we don't roll call anymore. So all in favor?
I.
I oppose. All right, we're good. And on to correspondence. I know.
Clearly.
Really cleared out. On to correspondence. Alexa, you can.
At Concord, we had a single email about MCAS scores and some questions around those and was more focused at the middle school level than anywhere else. So I took that one on and corresponded with our constituent. I think they also sent that to the region as well, right?
They did. Yes, we received both at the region as well, but Alexa responded on behalf of both of us because it was the middle school. And at the region, we had two correspondents about the signage at CCHS. And so that you'll see that on our agenda for the October 25th meeting. All right. So moving on to our discussion. First up is the School Committee Superintendent Relations. And in last week's adoption of our agreed upon practices and protocols by the Joint School Committee marked the conclusion of the work that's been done to improve the way the school committee members and the superintendent will work together. We hope that the work we have done with Rob Evans and the MASCE has provided us with the tools necessary to ensure a successful school year for the superintendent and for the school committee. And now we can move on to the school committee goals.
All right, guys, pulling up our document that everyone received today. So I tried in my email to sort of summarize how we got to this final summative document. So we started on August 23rd, and we had our goal workshop where we kind of came out with some overall themes and got like these rough outlines of what we wanted for our four goals. Then we moved on to our September meetings where we tackled the goals in two sections, our professional practice goals, which are goals number one and two. We've had good discussion on those and sort of what I would consider like a soft agreement, but not quite a formal vote on those two. And then last week, we worked on what I'm calling our sort of student-centric goals that are focused around student success and diversity equity, inclusion, and belonging. And what we really had to flush out last week were sort of what our action items were going to be, you know, what are we going to own in this work? And the big sort of TBD between last week and this week was, you know, we decided we were gonna seek some presentations from the different administrators who really manage and lead on this work. And, you know, and we know we discussed, we wanted some, some things that were tangible, measurable. So I, we, Lori reached out to Andrew and Kristen, who sort of, Kristen kind of is leading the charge on what I would think is goal number three. Andrew kind of leads the charge as our DEIB director on goal number four. And they were able to come back with some things based on our discussion. They got our, all my notes and recommend some presentations that sort of meet our criteria with respect to both the themes and the fact that these are measurable things we can talk about. So those were the only real changes. And I said in the, in my email, they offered a lot. And I don't, I'm not sure we're going to be able to get to like everything they're offering. So what I'm thinking is, you know, I wanted to err on the side of putting more in so that, you know, if we didn't get to it, I think that's okay. And we can, and we can work on prioritizing what we want to hear about as the year goes on. Anyone have any comments, thoughts? On everything because I, you know, our, our, our objective is to vote on them this evening. So this would be the time to sort of chime in on things that, well, anything, really.
I'll just say, I think it's been a really thorough process. I've appreciated the leadership. Sorry. I, it's been a really thorough process. I appreciate the leadership you've shown trying to give us everyone the opportunity to participate in it. And then also, I get working with the administration to get there. I mean, it's, it's, it's best if we're all able to work together on these, obviously. We're working towards the same goal. I get, working with the administration to get there. I mean, it's, it's, it's best if we're all able to work together on these, obviously. We're working towards the same goal. Ultimate goal. Um, so I, I don't have any like line by line items. Just, it's been, it's been great to be part of the process.
And I think like just as a reminder, we started this back on August twenty third in a workshop and Dorothy was with us and helping us and. I think we did a pretty good job getting to where we needed to get to. I mean, it was that night, you know, I, we had, I think you were on Zoom, Sarah, we on Zoom? And Sharon couldn't be there. We're like texting for, you know, everybody's input. But, you know, hopefully everybody can see their input in these goals. And so I, I think that, you know, and I realize I thank everyone for. The patience they had with getting us to where we needed to be, but extra time and I, and I think it was worth it.
I did, I honestly, because they came in today, like I haven't been able to fully read the. Because I was trying to get caught up with the presentations. So would it be possible just to wait until next meeting, just to officially vote on them, just so that, because?
Sure.
Yeah. And I mean, like looking at the, the action steps we had talked about, and I don't know where we landed on it, but. The idea media of having the joint, the one budget workshop where we just workshop.
Totally, which we left it separate because they're kind of separate things, but we can do them on one night, basically. One sort of bigger workshop.
Workshopping our budget.
Yeah.
Hands. What's, what's the word? What's the thing that we're trying, experiential learning?
Mike.
Could we also under budget, uh, look at something that maybe is so self evident that it's not even here? And that is that. We have to recommend a budget to both town meetings. I mean, that is the reason we do the, the work cited here. We do it so that we're competent enough to. Examine and weigh recommendations from the administration and put forward that budget.
Yeah, I mean, sure. I, I, again, I think what we were trying to do this year was differentiate between. Our responsibilities and sort of our goals. I think, I think that was. That was the goal of the goal works. That was the goal of the goal setting process, right? Because the responsibilities we have, which are to review policy, evaluate the superintendent. Put forth a budget are, are, are givens. And so these were, we want, this was sort of to be a differentiation. If you will, from what is assumed and given over and above our. Responsibilities, if you will, that we're going to sort of direct our work above and beyond what is like kind of our. Perfunctory kind of. Duties. That, that was the, that was the intention anyway.
In that case, as an internal document, it's just fine.
Yeah.
Externally, we don't want anybody to forget the fact that.
Oh, yeah, sure.
We take on that responsibility. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, when Lincoln, like, I think it's Lincoln Sudbury, they have, like, they have their goals paid, you know, just like they put on their website, but they have the goals. And then they have a page they call core functions.
Yeah.
And that's where they put the budget, the evaluation, the policy work, the just, you know, this is the stuff we gotta do. And this is the stuff we aspire to doing.
Exactly. That's precisely the difference.
And I like that term, the core functions, or something along those.
Great. Yeah, because I do want this to be. An outward facing document as well. I want the public to see. You know, I think we talked about even specifically with goals three and four, these are the goals that. This is how we elevate what we perceive our strategic priorities to be. Even though. There's not a lot of necessarily ownership that we necessarily have with them. I think that is important to the community.
And Carlisle Jack introduced linking the goals to each agenda and just kind of. We take a minute just to remind ourselves of our.
Yeah, we proposed that. People had mixed responses to that. So we can consider it again, but.
Having it accessible.
Yeah.
Somewhere. I don't, I don't know if you need to check in on them all the time, but to just.
Yeah.
An addendum.
We started that, I think, right when we came over, but there was mixed response. So we can look at it again, for sure.
And I think too, like we talked about our communications and. A new website will hopefully be coming at some point. And I think our current school community website is, is somewhat limited with. How it can look. And it doesn't, it's not as easy to navigate through. So, so maybe with. A new website or something like that, it can look a little bit better and people can go through. Different things like goals would be one thing and what our responsibilities are there. Because as it sits right now, we have agendas, meetings, minutes. We've got policy, we've got, you know, some other things. So we can look at how to do that, you know, forward facing to the public.
As, as we look at Metco enrollment, I wonder if this committee, as well as the DE. IB group might look at whether we're seeking retention or whether we're seeking something even more proactive than that. Retention to me says keep it stable. And I'm, I'm wondering if that's in fact what we want to do. Because our numbers are dropping. So I just think we should discuss it before we lock into a, a word there. Because it's a goal word.
So how would you?
Well, again.
Yeah, I'm like, how would you, yeah, like, I get it, but.
I'm not.
You gotta give me something.
Well, what I'm giving you is I think this committee should discuss it. What do we really want? Vis a vis Metco. Do we want retention, i.e. Hold things where they are? Or do we want build? Do we want restore? Do we, what do we want? I, I simply think it's worth discussing. Because it declares our intent. It's not a promise. It's a try. A goal is a try. So I, I don't know what my colleagues say.
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry, I agree. I think. What wording we use?
Yeah. Any suggestions on? What we might write instead?
Well, I, I don't want to get into it in depth right now. I don't think we're ready, but I, I will say we're up against forces. External as well as internal. It's a complex kind of thing. I, I would hope that at least we can hold the line with our current population. That'd be my, my personal desire and, and look to ways to. Participation even more robust if it's possible.
How about Metco enrollment and retention? That compass sort of both?
Because you're talking about enrollment numbers.
Enrollment and retention, is that something that we have?
No, the, so these were, these action steps were under the things we want to hear about from our professionals. So these were. As, as, it's sort of is like a way to guide our agenda planning, things we want to hear about as the year goes on. That is, yeah, no, we of course have no, we don't have ability to affect outcomes here. But we might want to know about. What are the initiatives that we're doing and are they successful? I think that's what our purview is.
And, and in the context of, as, as mentioned, the, the external forces, right? Of what are the pushes and pulls that, that are also impacting?
Great.
You know, because Metco has, you know. Dealing with a lot. In terms, and they, and they are looking at making some changes.
They've made significant changes. I think you'd need a whole presentation on. Backdrop of context and policy change on their end and Desi's involvement and our efforts and. We'd be happy to do that. Great. Give you an update on where we are.
We're in an ecosystem, right? So we have to figure out where is our strength in this ecosystem.
Yeah.
And we have been working on trying to schedule our Boston meeting at Metco Inc. So that meeting would be a good time to really go over. You know, some of the changes.
Firsthand talk about the Metco Inc. side of the work and.
Yeah.
Desi's involvement.
So we'll make sure when that's scheduled, we'll get that on that agenda.
Yeah.
So I think the retention part of it is more district.
Correct. Oh, here, no.
So the retention part of it is more district level. You know, things that they can do here in Concord to.
Correct.
Create a more healthy environment. So kids want to stay here. That was, I think that was the initial.
So the intent of that, yeah.
All right.
Okay.
Great.
Alright, great.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you for putting that all together because that was a ton of work and we certainly appreciate Alexa putting that together for us. It's like a side project. Right, on to our October one enrollments, Dr. Hunter.
So I wanted to just outline the point of this document and what it captures. These are. Our October first enrollments, which in all things important in terms of finance, the state's perspective on us. How we assess the regional agreement. It really is the yearly benchmark. So it drives the formula for the regional agreement based on the numbers. Of kids in Concord and Carlisle. It's the document, the, the document, the statistics the state and federal government use to fund any grants. Whether it be Title I or any of the others that are data driven in terms of student enrollment. So it's a really, really important set of numbers. So I just thought I'd share a few highlights of it and we can certainly take any questions. Starting with a high school, we're at thirteen hundred and nine overall. Nine hundred and forty one Concord students, two hundred and ninety three Carlisle students. So that's the split. Now that doesn't equal thirteen oh nine. I'll get to that in a minute. That's the split that's going to drive the regional agreement. So it's, and I'm rounding seventy six percent Concord, twenty four almost percent Carlisle, which is what we anticipated off of this. August twenty ninth numbers. So no surprises there. We also break out. Metco population. So you can see that forty nine students at the high school right now. We break out. Also staff enrollments, because as you live and see, they are allowed to bring students, their students and children to the schools. And then finally, we look at any other options. And so to get to the thirteen oh nine, there's also four students. That aren't counted here because we don't report them to Desi. Two of them came in through the special ed tuition that you approved, that process into the high school program. And two of them are foreign exchange students, which you also approved last spring, which is why the thirteen oh nine piecemeal is together and then comes up for sure. At the middle school where you can see we've finally reached the enrollment drop. I mentioned this to you a couple of months ago. So six fifty one, and that's the relief we've been waiting for starting to happen. And that's very welcome and planned accordingly. And then elementary, I'll just note that we've started to level off, which was the goal. So we're at three ninety six at Alcott, four fifteen at Theroe and four twenty nine at Willard. We always are watching those so that there's balance. And when needed, we make shifts and we did shift a little bit so that. The children of staff who are just beginning to start with us. Are now going back to Alcott where they'd been coming to Willard. So we always, we always try to be sure we're watching. And not get too discrepant among the elementary schools. There's a lot of other numbers here. We can talk on anything you're interested in, but. We do these monthly in my office through. Some of the staff that work with Bob and we are constantly watching these numbers and looking for any shifts. As the year progresses, budget time, this is a really important document and we watch it month to month as we look for. How enrollment might be impacting staffing needs, class size, et cetera.
Do you have the number of local students for elementary and middle?
Sure, yes. So let me find the right spot. We have twenty six at the middle school. And forty three at Alcott. We have two students who travel, one each to Theroe and Willard. For their purposes. So for total right now, back to your earlier point, we're at a hundred and twenty right now.
Is there a cap?
No, we, that's a district level decision. We've always aimed to try to maintain, which to Court's point. Hasn't been as successful as we might like, both in terms of incoming kindergarten, looking at our other entry points of six and nine. And just looking at how, how kids are, are faring, whether they stay with us or go somewhere else. So we're down almost twenty kids from last year this time. I'll tell you that even the K piece has been a challenge. We usually aim for ten to twelve. We weren't even able to fill all of that. And that's some of the pipeline of Metco's recruiting. And we can talk more on what that's changed and what that looks like. But there's a lot of talk at Metco Inc. on how, how to bring kids in to the systems. And really keep working at it. So that'd be a great conversation to have down in a really thorough way, both recruiting, retention, like all of it, because there's a lot of layers.
Because we even talked last year a little bit about can parents choose which district their kids go to? And the answer is no, correct? Like.
And there's morphing of that, it's.
Feels like it's changing.
It is. Actually, we got notice earlier, they're going to start to shift. More towards that, but not the way they used to where it was pretty cleanly a parent's decision. Siblings now are allowed to come. So I'd love Millie to go through all of that and talk on the changes they've been working at.
Because that's been a big factor.
Yes, that's been a part of the factor. The other is just the straight registration process, trying to simplify that the. Couple of years ago, they went to an online portal and there's a lot of documentation required right from the beginning. And they were watching all the families start the process and not finish it. Big difference, the waiting list doesn't exist anymore the way it did for all those years. And Desi insisted on that. So it's been, been a lot of moving pieces.
Did anything surprise you in the data?
No, I kind of, I watched this really closely and especially over the summer as changes happen and kids either leave or come in and. Try to stay really close. So we don't get surprised as school opens and principals are very. Much advocating as class sizes start to change and evolve and helping me stay even closer.
Hey, I, I just have one question. I thought last spring when we were talking about kindergarten enrollment, we were looking at kindergarten enrollment being down and it looks like it was, I mean.
A lot of it filled in, right? So we're definitely in a place where the census shows us one thing with the. Kids who were born in the right timeframe. And then there's this other piece that's hard to capture as families come in or houses turn over. And we wish we had that crystal ball. So yes, the enrollments are down. But you can also see we, we've, you know, held fairly steady. So.
They're up. I mean, I thought they were going to be down.
Yeah, if you go. Yeah. So if you go to the aggregate page here. Kindergartens at one eighty six instead of one eighty two. So that's up a little bit. Yeah.
It's going to be down overall.
We did too, which is why we took a budgetary hit to add a K class better. So.
You added it back.
Yeah, yeah. And, you know, there's some hard decisions to be made. You'll notice I'll highlight this one because it's going to come up. I'm sure again, there's twenty one students per class at the K. And K and Alcott and boy, Naomi Craco and I talked all summer about the pros and cons because once. Once we've announced classes and then your splitting comes up from three to four and. It's not, nothing's super simple in terms of like, oh, let's just add a class. Both fiscally, space wise and a building, needs of the kids, the fact we've maybe already released classroom assignments. Lots to consider. So we actually aired on the side of leaving that a little bigger and put in a little more support help instead. So. Yeah, yeah, lots to, lots to weigh.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now we'll go to Bob with his finance and operations updates and you should have received. The memo. In your packet. So I'll turn it over to you.
So I'll try to make this as interesting as a student's presentation.
Oh, you don't turn the microphone, sorry.
So. It's a high bar. So I have a few items to report on. We have final numbers for both Concord Public Schools and the Concord Carlisle Regional School District. I do want to just comment that we felt like it was important to kind of delay and close to resolve some issues to make sure we had as much funding as possible and CPS carried board into FY. Twenty three. So, so the timing of this presentation is later than I would normally want it to be. But thanks for your patience. The, the first item is, is kind of closing out FY twenty two, looking back at CPS. And I just want to highlight a few. Of the key things.
I, I think we should be, this is really the regional school committee meeting, right? That we have a separate CPS meeting. I know, I'm not trying to be rude, but. I just in being fair to our colleagues and Carlisle, should we try to do our CPS?
That's how we wrote it, yeah.
Okay. So I will jump to the Concord Carlisle Regionals. Thank you. So this Concord Carlisle Regional School District. For FY twenty two. Kind of the significant items I'd want to call out and looking at kind of the one thousand level report. So I did share with you a kind of one thousand level, which. Is kind of the Desi function categories that the. And you can see them on the screen there, the one hundred. and you can see them on the screen there. The one hundred level, we don't need to display that is kind of a lower level of detail. Um, and these are aligned with the DESI uh function codes. Um, so some of the significant um items I want to kind of highlight are the insurance costs and retirement costs were uh less than budgeted, um, one hundred seventy-eight thousand for insurance costs. Um, and we were able to use that to offset some some expenses in other areas. We had increased electricity usage from leaving the dampers open for COVID mitigation. Uh, it was close to a hundred thousand dollars. We also in the uh in the maintenance category had some unanticipated HVAC repairs. Um, overall, we spent down the budget and left an uncommitted balance of two thousand eight hundred and seventy-six uh in spending. Um, the um you might recall that we talked about trying to um preserve E and D um by maintaining a surplus at the end of year of three hundred thousand. Um, we were able to spend down uh the operating budget uh because we had favorable revenues. And um so instead of uh retaining a three hundred thousand dollar expense um balance, um those favorable revenues contributed to E and D. Um, both in chapter seventy, chapter seventy-one. Uh, we're in in some one-time revenues on top of that. Uh, so we're able to maintain our E and D at a healthy balance. And as a reminder, um, we have a cap of five percent of our budget that we're able to retain for E and D. Which for the new members on the committee, E and D is kind of the regional district equivalent of free cash, um kind of retain balances that we carry forward. Um, other funds in the region I've summarized. So there's there's CPS you can skip over the Concord Carlisle uh balances. We have healthy uh balances in the food service revolving fund. Um, two hundred and thirty-nine thousand carried over to this year. Athletic revolving, three hundred and forty-three thousand, three hundred and forty-four rounded. Um, and the parking revolving uh zeroed out. Um, and the E and G projection is an increase to uh one million seven hundred sixty thousand. So let's say we have um some healthy balances that we're carrying forward to next year. Um, certainly the free um lunch programs have helped our food service program. Um, helped our participation and we're glad that's carried forward to this year. I do think uh you know, the revolving fund balances, as I mentioned here, are important to maintain some type of reserve level as a protection in part against inflationary press uh pressures and also as a kind of a reserve to meet unanticipated needs that can happen. Um, and so I just wanted to highlight that. The other item, um it's not necessarily revolving fund. It's kind of a quasi revolving fund. It's circuit breaker for special ed. Um, we were able to carry over the maximum allowable balance of eight hundred and forty-seven thousand, three hundred and eighty, which is current year revenue we get for circuit breaker, um, circuit breaker that we receive and FY twenty-two relates to our claims from twenty-one. And you're allowed to carry it over to the following year. So this serves as um kind of a stabilization for special education. If we had some unexpected costs this year, we can draw from current year circuit breaker to offset it. I think I I'm going to leave FY twenty-two there unless there's any questions.
Can I just ask, when we do our, when we do our workshop, can we look at real world example? Because circuit breaker and E and D are always, they're they're confusing to a lot of us and they're definitely confusing to FinComs. We always struggle with how to um, so if we can do like a look back of the circuit breaker, like, okay, we had this much in circuit breaker in twenty in twenty and we had this much in in allowable expenses and then we got reimbursed just to see how it works in real life.
Sure.
Um, because I don't think, I've seen it in like this, in the MASC workshops with the theoreticals, but I think it would be more interesting to
Yeah, I think if we should. To understand it, I think you have to see.
Yeah.
Same year. And then third year is typically the year you spend it.
Yeah.
If you're able to operate it the way that I would, you know, we like to preserve funds and carry them forward. But yeah, we could, that's not that.
Yeah, I think like E and D and circuit breaker are the two that just like, like, how do you how do we use, how do you keep the E and D below the five percent, like all that kind of
Sure, yeah, sure.
Thanks.
So Bob, as I understand it, um, we utilize the three hundred thousand because it was offset with unanticipated revenues. Did I hear that correctly?
We had favorable chapter seventy revenue and yes, seventy-one revenue and some one-time revenues.
Um, and do you need school committee application authorization for any of that? Or is that strictly administrative?
No, the the revenue that comes in, we are, we're held to uh meeting the revenue we budget. We came in below that, we'd actually have to offset our spending. So it's fair, it's good to budget a little bit conservatively on revenue because if we go into a year and have expense challenges. We have to manage those in the budget. And then if you have revenue challenges, you have an additional um work to factor in. So uh in a lot of places, the the budget a little bit conservably on revenue. And then as we receive it, it just comes in and gets applied to E and D. If E and D goes over the cap, then we have to factor that in and return some to the towns in the assessment.
Which we've done.
Yeah.
Modestly. And can we get uh other revolving accounts in front of us this year? Um, adult ed, I'm curious about. Um, student activity, I know we've aggregated uh some different accounts there. And I don't know if we still are responsible for PDG accounts.
PB.
PTG.
The PGGs all have their own accounts.
Entirely independent.
Yeah, and there are no more student activity accounts either. Correct?
Well, they're they're managed by the district.
Managed by the district, right.
We, I will say about adult ed and um student activities, there's there's self-funding. We um
Oh, I understand.
They'll spend what they receive and um as far as the, what was the third one, the PTG? We do have donations. So the CEF and PTGs flow through um into donation accounts, but the funds that they maintain on their books until they donate it, we don't have access to.
No, certainly.
Once it's donated, we typically will spend it for the purposes they designate. Um, so if we were to show those balances, they're pretty much earmarked or ready for specific projects.
Oh, yeah, I'm not suggesting it's for any reason other than knowing the financial state of our different accounts. That's all. I don't think those are line item debates for us.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
So.
All right. And then you're going to do the finance committee.
Yeah, I think on FY twenty-three, I I think I want to just um leave that here for now and um not go into it into much detail because it's it's very early in the year. We have not applied all grant funds. Some grants haven't been approved yet. So there's there's belief that'll come to the budget. There's transfers that um still need to be recorded. So there's a lot of moving parts. It's early in the year. And I I think when you see the Q two numbers, they're a little bit more of an accurate reflection of of where we are. Um, and then I can uh focus a little bit more time on the uh the FinCom guidelines presentation. Erin, do you mind pulling up the the guidelines presentation?
A- as you leave fiscal twenty-two behind, um, I hope you will uh express our thanks to everybody on your team. You balanced that end of your budget on the head of a pin. Uh, I know it took a lot of effort, so thank you.
Thanks. I will share that with the team. I was not here for some of that for a couple of months and I think there was a lot of people pitching in. So thank you. We'll share that with them.
Just as you go through, if you'll focus on the region.
Okay. So our key strategic planning niches, uh, these are in our plan. You want to kind of
Yeah, these should look really familiar to you and Bob asked me to provide them. They they are strategic plan objectives. So
It made sense to to stay consistent and remind the finance committee of the goals that we are currently operating with. So Erin, you can skip through those and go to the regional numbers. One more. There you go.
Uh, it's uh back one, Erin. Okay, here it is. Um, so th- this five-year projection, this is a view, we did uh meet with the FinCom and um factored in their feedback. One of the things that Parrish are who we we spoke with wanted to see was a top-level view of our district's expenditures and where our funding would come from to offset it. Um, and so the expenditures we projected here, we focused on um everything, not just the general fund. And then the funding sources identify how we pay for those expenditures. So looking at the top level, as you look at um the um the five years, we're projecting a three-point-four percent increase um in three-point-three the next two years. Um, and um the next slides will show a little bit more detail about how the expenditures um drive that. Um, the one thing I did want to point out here is that in FY twenty-four, you'll see a significant increase in circuit breaker uh as a funding source. So uh when we look at our out-of-district tuitions, you're going to see a spike in our forecast on the next slide. In order to offset that partially, we're drawing down some of our current year circuit breaker revenue. So we're not using just the prior year. We're using some of the uh funds we receive in FY twenty-four and you'll see why on on the next slide. Um, before we jump to the next slide, um, I've also forecasted the revenue we receive um in general fund to arrive at assessments for the towns. Um, and um so so the expenditure budgets increased by those percentages of three-point-four, three-point-three to two-point-five, two-point-five. Um, part of the reason for the two and twenty-six is that's the year we factor in some middle school consolidation. Um, and again, what's mostly driving the increase in FY twenty-four is is special education increases. Um, so why don't we jump to the next slide? And so what we've done in our projection is we've broken these out to on the left-hand side, you'll see the expense categories. Uh, for projection purposes, this is the view that we used. Um, so it's a little bit more focused on on kind of um types of expenses and less on the DESI functions. And so we've made consistent uh forecasts across those expense categories. Um, some of them factor in inflation. You'll see contract services at four percent. That might be a little bit conservative, um, potentially. You know, we're we're forecasting for here. Supplies and materials, we have seen, you know, the effective inflation. Um, so you know, instructional materials, things like that. Um, we factor in the six percent inflation rate. Uh, but the one that uh I should highlight that you can see highlighted in yellow is the out-of-district tuition. So we have um we've received notification from the OSD, the Operational Services Division, which sets and approves private school out-of-district tuition rates. And they've notified districts across the state that tuitions will increase fourteen percent next year. So most of our out-of-district tuitions are in fact to private schools. Um, some of them are to collaboratives and I forecasted a smaller increase there, four percent. They probably face some of the same pressures, but um but we're not looking at a fourteen percent increase there.
Do they set the collaborative tuition rates? They don't set those. No, okay. Collaborative sets at the boards of each collaborative sets up. Okay.
Collaborators are
Increases and not student, what is it? Sorry. Number of students changing. It's just the tuition.
There's two factors. There's a fourteen percent increase in the rates and then there's uh four students uh transferring up from CPS to the high school. I think only one graduating. So there's a net to be additions. Percent increase. So the increase would be higher than nineteen percent if I didn't use that four hundred thousand dollars in circuit breaker to offset it. So you know, if we find um other ways to offset it, we will if we're able to prepay. And you know, that's things we start now that we look at this, we start looking at now, but um we obviously need to support our students this year as well. So we'll see what we can do and identify ways to save, um, hopefully to to offset that a bit.
And that's not a typical increase, the fourteen percent they they've they've
No, so that's a good question. I uh it's been floating around on the on the business officer listserv.
Yeah.
The ten-year list of rates, the the highest rate I saw other than fourteen was like three percent.
Oh, wow. Okay.
You know, that's
Like those right back down following the the following years.
Yeah, I I
Yeah.
They're going to have um a a lot of people pushing back if they
Yeah.
After fourteen percent, don't have uh some, so that's the assumption. Um, they won't give forward guidance beyond a year. Um, in the history of fairly low rates suggests that we wouldn't especially expect that again. Certainly would hope not, but wouldn't expect so either. I would also add that um private schools can go through a process to get their rates recertified every certain number of years. So there's a possibility a specific school can go through that process to get more than a three percent raise in a given year. So this is um an unusual year, um, but typically we'd be looking at more modest increases there. And typically, those increases would be driven by student population shifts, not an inflationary pressure. So um this is important for us to highlight to the FinCom. They they are looking at um and they're asking for information to help them factor into their forecast. Um, this is certainly information that uh we have no control over. Um, and I think it's important to highlight to them. So um I think those are the main things I want to highlight on um FY, uh on the on the projection. I might have, uh, there might be one additional slide, Erin.
Well, you're still on this one. Um, I just want to commend the administration for the clarity. It's sobering, but they the numbers are the numbers. They've got to be shared. Thank you.
And just before we leave the projection slide, you know, our best projections are the current current year and upcoming year. Beyond that, you can hear how much volatility there can be. We just always want to put the asterisks next to it that once it gets two years out and beyond, it's our best effort with what information we have.
Need to date stamp every
Yes.
But I just have one other comment to the timing of this report being available. Um, that fourteen percent memo came out very recently. So we thought it was very important to back to that into the projections, which took a little bit of work to get back into the detailed data and filter into this. So that was part of the reason why the information was um, most of the reason why the information was available Monday.
Um, instead of
That and Bob not believing it and taking a few days to call the state. Confirm that it is real.
And and to the degree that our meeting is outward facing, I think it probably is worth saying these are projections that are volatile, as you say, but it doesn't mean we build to these budgets. We're still doing our zero budgeting, assuming assuming today we would land somewhere near here.
Right.
Yeah. Um, and the the debt assessment at the bottom, the only change there was from the previous projections is we layered in the access road. Um, the access road project was not approved. Um, the last time these numbers were presented. So if you layer that in, that's the difference between the product projections and this projection.
And that was eight hundred?
Yeah.
Eight fifty each.
Yeah, and there's a piece of that's in the stabilization, but that sounds about right.
That the eight hundred.
So we'll go to the next slide, please, Erin. So uh the conquered share comes right from the October one number and the Carlisle share there in FY twenty-four. It's based on the October one enrollments of two thousand twenty-two. Um, and so when you look at the increase, the actual increase on the previous slide was three-point-four percent. Um, it it turns out that that's one point nine percent to conquer. Eight point seven percent to Carlisle. Um, this is information, I think Carlisle um from our conversations with them has aware, is aware that there there's a shift in enrollment and that's coming. Um, this kind of gives them more specific specific to the impact of what that shift is doing. Um, after FY twenty-five, I factored in some enrollment shift. I I stopped, I think for twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight. There's too many variables. You could have more students enrolling or less students enrolling in private schools. There's a fair number of conquered students who attend some of the private schools in the area. Um, so I I didn't think it made sense to shift those numbers from twenty-six forward. Um, so those are kind of a a view of of what the assessments look like. Um,
FY twenty-four, just to make sure I understand. FY twenty-four. That's based on October first. So those are the numbers for next year.
Two thousand twenty-two, right. FY twenty-three numbers are used for FY twenty-four.
Yeah, okay.
Calendar FY twenty-two, FY twenty-three.
I don't know if this is for our colleagues from Carlisle or from the or for the administration. This eight point seven, does this uh generate any new conversations about rolling averages on the part of your FinCom?
Not to speak on half of.
Haven't heard of it yet.
But I think. We've had, I think, a year or two in Carlisle to be aware of this coming. We've we've always known that this ninth grade coming, the ninth graders, the Carlisle ninth graders who came in was a bubble class. And they've always been like since kindergarten, they have been a bubble class. So I don't think that this was a surprise to anybody. And I believe as as Melissa has indicated, that they've been squirreling away.
Yeah, we met with the chairs and town administrator, chairs of select board FinCom, Tracy was there. I'm going to smile and say, I certainly haven't heard anything about rolling averages in Carlisle, nor will it be a suggestion this administration brings up. If Carlisle wants to bring it to us, that's up to them.
We've learned that would be an unraveling that would.
Yeah, that's.
Major consequences.
I think they're well prepared. Yeah.
Data as early as people have it, you know, and open sharing of of all, you know, just evolutions of information as people have it. To give everyone the best amount of.
I think as school committee, administration, town leadership, we've gotten much better at seeing the projections coming. So it wasn't a surprise. And just like when you save money, that wasn't a surprise last year either. So we're trying to be better at the forecast.
It can also say that coming from a district that had it, you still have some bumps. We had those same splits. We had one district with a negative and one with a plus five percent with the three year average, so.
Even with a three year.
Yeah, because it was trending one way and so.
What do you mean by bubble?
You mean by bubble?
A large, a particularly large class. We had, I think there were eighty kids in that eighth grade and the people who are now ninth graders, so the. Class, the people graduated eighth grade, where normally the classes are sort of seventy to seventy five. Which shifts a couple of kids in Carlisle. Increases our percentage a lot. Because we are. Small, small. Yep.
Yeah.
Is it possible to get private school data from either town or both towns? I know Weston and I started a very thorough deep dive because they were seeing weird fluctuations on kids going to private school where they were kind of surprised. Or coming in from private school.
To the best of our ability.
But I mean, is it reported anywhere? I'm not saying we need to go out.
Uh, so the state requires the students attending have to, the other schools have to report back to us where they are. So that should be data we have.
Okay. I just would be interested in what the trends are. So I mean, particularly at the high school, you know, since we see these other other factors. Is it fifteen or is it fifty? I have.
And I do think over the past couple of years in particular, I mean, some people were choosing private because there was in person school, so. You know, you never know what's going to happen with the private school, so a lot of change there. And then I think we're seeing some of those kids coming back to public school because they wanted to be in person in private school. And they're like, oh, now we're in back in school, back to the public school, so. Lots of variables in the private schools.
There might be different entry points too, depending on the age groups of those private schools.
Okay. I know, thank you. Very thorough.
How does the Mecca students? How does the Mecca students affect this budget? Because it says conquered and call out, but. Doesn't really show like the the numbers of of Mecca students dropped.
Can, Aaron, can you go back? To one more slide. Okay, so the Metco funding is, it comes from two places. It comes from the FY twenty four, you see the one point one million. That's a piece of it's a significant chunk of that is is Metco grant funding. And then the thirty seven million in the general fund covers the difference that's not covered. Well, it's not all the thirty seven million, but the portion of that Metco grant doesn't cover. Comes out of our general fund. That gets apportioned. Equally between Concord, Carlisle, based on, it just follows the same formula for Concord and Carlisle. So it's seventy six percent. Concord, twenty four percent Carlisle.
So when we when we look at the enrollment numbers, we have thirteen hundred and nine students in in Concord, Carlisle. And I think there are fifty seven, fifty nine.
Forty nine.
Forty nine, sorry, forty nine Metco students, right? So basically you take that thirteen oh nine and you subtract from it the four who were the out of district people. You subtract the twenty two who are the faculty students, you subtract the forty nine who are the Metco students. And the remainder is just the Concord and Carlisle students. That's the number that's used for the apportioning of the assessments. So basically Concord and. The Concord and Carlisle equally. Cover everybody else. They're not, they're not attributed to either, you know, they're proportionally responsible. For all of the. Either of the non Concord and Carlisle resident students.
All right. Well, thank you, Bob, and we'll look forward to seeing you again in the Concord meeting. I know, it's like we just keep going, we'll come back and forth, changing towns. All right, yeah, go ahead.
All right. Almost everyone attended Carrie's first policy meeting, which was great. We had incredible participation that was held just six days ago. So I hope it all remains fresh in our minds. And with that, I will turn it over to Carrie to take everybody through. All of these changes.
Okay, so thank you to everybody for coming to the first. Policy committee of the whole, and especially thank you to Dorothy Presser, who is our MASC. Representative and Dr. Hunter for offering, both of whom offered really good insights. So we spent the first meeting talking about Massachusetts Association of School Committee policy updates. We looked at some of their periodically the MASC releases. Policy updates around to the state, sorry. They release policy updates to school committees across the state, making recommendations of policies that people should. That committees should consider adopting or changing. And typically they are updates to existing policies or new policies based on changes to Massachusetts law. So last week at our meeting, we reviewed two sets of recommendations from MASC. Their February two thousand twenty two recommendations and their August two thousand twenty two recommendation. In February, I'm going to give kind of just an overview of the discussion. And then kind of walk through what our recommendations were to bring to the committee tonight. And then for a first reading and then from there, I think if there's any discussion, that's great. And if not, we will bring it to our next meeting for a vote. Is that correct process?
That's the process.
Great. So for the first kind of batches, batch of policy that we reviewed, it was the February two thousand twenty two updates. And they revolved around updates to sexual harassment and discrimination policies. At both CPS and the region, we have robust policies in place. However, MASC is suggesting that we adopt new policies that they have worked with the Attorney General Attorney General's Office to craft. So the suggestion we made at the meeting last week is to adopt. With the advice of Dr. Hunter and Dorothy Presser is to adopt three new policies as as recommended by MASC. So those are ACR, ACAB and JICK. Those are new sexual harassment and discrimination policies. And then in an effort to reduce any redundancies, we would. Since these new policies cover our existing policies and then some additional, then then some. We would remove our existing policies, which are ACA and JBA. We voted unanimously to bring this to tonight's meeting and so we feel pretty good, I think. Generally about these changes. Then we moved on to the August recommendations. In the August recommendations from MASC, they were centered around the Crown Act, which is creating a respectful and open world for natural hair act. This act prohibits discrimination against employees, students and other individuals based on their natural protective hairstyle. None of the MASC policies that they're recommending changes to were actual content changes. It was specifically expanding the coverage based on the language that was passed in the Crown Act. So here again, the committee supported sending the following policies to tonight's meeting. For a first read, so JICA, which is student dress, GBA, which is equal employment opportunity. GCF, which is professional staff hiring, JB, which is equal educational opportunities and JFBB, which is cultural. Again, no content changes. This was just expanding its coverage. And then the last recommended update that we talked about was JIC, which is our student discipline policy. And this is another policy that there was no content change to. It was specifically the addition of a reference at the end of the policy, ensuring that. Students are effectively supported when responding to a behavior that is based on a student's disability. That could lead to discipline. So no content change, just an added reference in the policy. And here again, we voted unanimously to bring this one for our first read. So I don't want to speak for everyone, but I I think based on the conversation that these were. Good recommendations from MASC, we feel pretty confident, we felt pretty confident in the conversation. If anyone feels differently, please feel free to chime in. That these are worth updating for our community. And that's it. Again, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Yeah, it was a great meeting. First chair, first time chairing a meeting. Well done.
Oh, next meeting, November ten.
All right.
On your calendars.
Thank you so much. So these will come, all this whole group will come back. At our October twenty sixth meeting for approval in our second read. Any comments before I go or?
So the only request I have is that. That we didn't, we just got the two versions. We didn't get our personalized, I one with the updated. You know, reference is probably not a big idea. Deal, but the ones that are wholesale replaced, we need to put in the district's names and some of them, I think one or two have a. Actually put the names of the officers or whatever for get points. So if we could just see that a little before the meeting, so.
Sure.
Yeah.
And if I can pick up on that, did we at our meeting reference the idea that we're going to list titles, not names?
Yeah, titles, not names, so that they, we don't have to update them every. Time there's turnover.
Okay.
We just didn't have the time to do any of that. You met Wednesday, the.
I just don't want to have, you know, like, oh, you didn't.
Yeah, you know, got it. Thank you.
Not notwithstanding Carrie's awesome job as chair. I I don't think anybody should anticipate this volume in the future.
Big lift. I don't know if she's, if she's gonna do it, then she's gonna do it. Fight it all off.
Get a time. No, I'm just kidding.
So thank you guys and thanks Cynthia for that. Awesome. Thank you guys for participating.
All right, so MASC, the MASC conference is coming up and this is what happens every year. You all receive the resolutions in your packet and they look a little something like this in very small writing for those of us that need glasses. That would be me. And so we didn't actually go back and last year, we didn't really discuss all of the resolutions at our first meeting. So this is just, resolutions are here. We do need to take a vote. On sending a delegate and an alternate. That is the requirement from MASC is an actual vote. And there's a form attached to our packet that I'll have to send in before, I think it was October twentieth. So we're not going to discuss the resolutions tonight. You have them all, you can read them all. And I think that, you know, we had some discussion last year of whoever the delegate is can go and embark in discussion in the delegate process. And I don't know, did, did you guys do it on Zoom last, you did it on Zoom last year, right?
This is, yeah, back in person. It seems like the delegate discussion is on the first day in the later part of the afternoon. Sarah, Tracy and I are going, so I think will be your choices for telling whoever wants to do it. But yeah, so just making sure whoever chooses that role is going to be there during that time, I think it starts at two forty, two thirty, something like that. On Wednesday.
And did they have on Zoom, did they, I mean, was it a big robust discussion in the assembly? Do you remember?
There were some things end up.
That I was there the prior year, yeah.
Yeah. Were you, you were in person the prior year? No, still on Zoom, okay. So two years.
And we had to vote online.
Oh, that would be challenging.
So I don't know what a regular assembly does, if they just.
Has anyone been to the regular assembly in this group? No? No, so we have no idea. It's very exciting.
I think it would be less, I think they vote raising hands.
Just raise hands or paper or something.
There was some glitches for sure with technology, so hopefully that will be not.
I remember hearing a report from the twenty nineteen one, that it was very, that there were. There's some things go quickly. It either goes quickly or it's like town meeting. Yeah, right?
Yeah. And there are the recommendations from. The resolutions committee are recommending these for a vote.
And I think there are like twenty, something the year I went.
Yes. So I guess what I would, what I would ask all of us, I mean. I I don't believe we need to go through all the resolutions. I I am completely comfortable with the delegate acting on behalf of all of us. And then, you know, you have them to read if everyone's comfortable with that. If someone's not comfortable with that, certainly let me know.
Are we making a recommendation tonight?
No. Who? Yes, delegate. We're going to vote on the delegate. So your choices are Sarah, Alexa or I? And does anyone, is anyone dying to do it?
No, and I'm not positive about my timing because I just found out that. I'm going to be, I'm going to be solo with the kids that week, so I.
Oh, okay.
Not sure that Wednesday is going to be, I wouldn't bank on my.
Okay, so your choices are Alexa or I and I might. What? Well, one will have to be the delegate and one will be the alternate. I love being an alternate, but.
Great.
I'll state my. Okay, all right. So we'll, we'll figure that out. So I'm happy to do either. Honestly, I'm happy to do either, so. We do a vote in a few minutes, but that's, that's the background there. All right, on to our action. I was trying to make it fun tonight. It only.
Oh, gosh, we went through this last year.
I can't imagine you don't. Yeah. So I think.
So there we go. Be the delegate and the alternates. I'm going to do that. We'll do that. If everyone's.
You'll have to vote on that.
Congratulations. Yeah, so we'll vote on that.
Great honor.
Minutes, but but we'll have to actually then take one vote in the region and one in the. So we'll do two separate votes.
To amend the agenda.
Right, so on to our action items. So we have our school committee goals. And so we had some discussion about moving that till next, next meeting.
Yeah.
Thank you. For vote.
I am totally comfortable with that. I'm going to ask one thing. Can we get to scheduling like, even though it's not formally approved, like things like school committee coffees and things like that? Even though that's not, we don't have anything formally approved. We good with that? There's a couple of things I want to. Yeah, I feel a little antsy about.
Officially voted our goals. I think we kept our goals in like.
Are you saying you want to go ahead and schedule them?
I think I would like to start figuring that out. Yeah.
We, I think we should, as a committee, should talk about when those are going to be.
Sure, I mean, I think, I think we should.
Next meeting.
I think we can come with a proposed calendar and then sort of chit chat it out. Proposed locations and all of that. Everyone good with that?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I'm not going to just blanket schedule. Yeah.
You know, I think we've all.
Just making sure they don't.
It's just the exact.
Yeah, and even for scheduling purposes, we could come, we could actually send it before the next meeting if we are really hot on this. Because it would be scheduling, we can do over email.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, that's true. Scheduling.
Of coffees.
I think we should talk about it as a group.
Great.
We can't deliberate about when, where.
When, where, how, right?
Because I, I think it's important to do weekends and evenings as well as daytime.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. And very like they were last year because we, I think last year we did some weekends, we did.
We did mornings, weekend.
So maybe we start with Carlisle and Boston first and then get to Concord after that.
Yes.
And I think to move to CPS, we should take a close look at the building committees, public meetings.
Yeah.
To make sure we don't collide.
Overlap. Okay. Great.
And and and.
And our, and our coffees and all that, that which are.
Meetings and.
Schedule.
Yes.
All the fun event.
So you'll get a lovely calendar grid that will look pretty and hopefully we'll get it all set, but we'll discuss our next meeting.
So we'll move those.
All right, so we have a vote to approve the staff child enrollment. If anyone has that up and could read the motion.
I moved at the Concord Carlisle School Committee votes to accept a, nope, wrong one.
And Lori, we don't need a discussion about this.
I think it's pretty self.
Self explanatory.
Tori.
Yeah, okay.
Sorry, I moved at the Concord and moved at the Concord and. Sorry. I vote that the conquered, I moved that the conquered and conquer Carlisle School Committees vote to approve the following staff request to enroll his child at Concord Public Schools for the 2022, 2023 school year. And that the tuition be waived. Do we read the name?
You don't have to.
Okay.
It's referenced.
Yep.
Second.
Okay. And discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Okay. Welcome to the district. And then we have another vote to accept the donation from the Friends of Football.
Yeah. So Erin Johnkis brought this to us from the CCH Friends of Football. They're donating $5,000 because we had 110 students come out for football this year. Domingos probably knows better than I do, but um, and that required some new uniforms. We really took all the ninth graders. We got creative with scheduling and making sure they had the opportunity to play. And there's just a need to refresh some of the equipment with so many kids. So it's really great.
That's great.
Yeah, it's really great.
Okay. Anyone have that motion in front of them?
I should do.
Oh, go right ahead. Go right, Carrie.
Carrie. Um, I moved at the Concord Carlisle School Committee votes to accept a donation from the CCHS Friends of Football in the amount of $5,000 to be used for new football equipment.
Second.
And thank you to Josh Reed for building an excellent football program with lots of kids interested. So it's great to see that. And thank you too. Oh, there is a home game. Yes, we have two more home games left this week and next week. Yes. And then I believe there's an away game and then there's Thanksgiving. Right? Am I right? Okay. And, and it's actually, it's really fun. I encourage all of you to go. It's a beautiful night out on our campus. You can hang out with me this night. But yeah, it's Friday.
Okay.
All right. Um, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi. All right. And on to our nomination of delegates and, um, I, I'm apparently going to be the delegate for the region and Alexa will be the alternate. So if anyone would like, okay.
If anyone want to second this dream.
Second.
Discussion, you know, if anyone wants to jump in, feel free. Okay, let's vote. So all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All right, we're going.
Right.
Thank you.
And I would like to adjourn the, um, Concord Carlisle School Committee. Thank you. Thank you, Sarah and Sharon. We'll see you tomorrow. We'll see you tomorrow.
Block, you guys. Nicely done.
Right. Um, all right. So we are.
See you tomorrow.
Yes.
Yeah, right. You're not gone for long. Um, all right. So CMS, we are, or no, reading ahead. CPS, we're staying in session and we will start with our building committee update. Do you want to take that, Lauren?
Sure. And then anyone who wants to add in. Uh, so the work that's gone on since we last met, uh, is actually mostly twofold. One is the VE process with the building committee itself. We have VE'd through the exhaustive list totaling 1.8 million dollars down from where we were. Uh, so we're coming in at three million plus instead of five, um, for, over the town meeting of, uh, approval. So that work is, is essentially complete. The select board met a week ago, a little more than a week ago, and have set January 19th for special town meeting. On Monday night, they will do the calendar work to backtrack from the 19th of January for public hearings and warrant openings and all the required steps. I know communication subcommittee met last week. I was able to attend for a little bit of it. Um, and there's a communication plan in draft form with, uh, dates, tentative dates slated for coffees and, um, a forum meant to be in parallel and complement to the town meeting process with the finance committee, public hearing, et cetera. So I think all those are intended to come together. I was on today with SMMA and Hill and the chairs. We are expecting to have the estimate, the sixty, the sixty percent estimate back. Um, next week, they have a full day reconciliation meeting on Tuesday with the estimator. So that's up until then, the estimate really isn't available to us. They'll see it probably a day or two ahead of that. So Wednesday, we're expecting to see it then a, a building committee meeting on Thursday. So obviously those are highly anticipated numbers. Uh, we've been doing a bit of a look through some of the other communities and where their numbers have landed between five and 10% seems pretty standard over original budget. We're within the lower end of that. Curious to see if we stay in the lower end or if we start jumping up. So it's a busy time. Um, in good news, there's also other work going on to get more and more toward the close of DD because that process was approved through the town to continue that work. Um, those meetings are a little more fun because we're talking specifics of the school and even talking timeline of breaking ground and the field chaos that will ensue and all of that. So um, some concrete next steps have also been on my plate with Mr. Cameron. So we're kind of looking, looking to that actual tangible work as well. So we're making progress. We're definitely making progress. A lot of hard work, a lot of people all coming together to address the issues that have come up and we're just really grateful and look forward to continued discussion.
Right.
Anything to add?
Yeah.
I just want to note that I saw the email that came out today to the community from, I think Tom Lucy wrote it or just.
Oh, Tom wrote his building committee.
Yeah, but it was incredibly detailed and, um, I thought it was really like, well, there were so many details that have happened. So much has happened over the last few months and I thought it was a really warranted, like dive into it.
Great. Great. Yeah. Tom gathered all the numbers and does a good job of trying to summarize.
Yeah.
A lot of meetings.
Yeah.
Something concise, but valuable.
And it's like, when you see it, it does make you realize like we do need to grow our subscribers. We, we do put out good information, you know?
That was a really.
You know, to your point, um, we just got to get as many eyeballs on it as possible.
And it's clear, I mean, so much work, so many hours of meetings. So.
And I even think myself, like I'm a subscriber in my school committee email, but not my personal email. Like so, you know, it is important for people to really subscribe to that list. And it has been in your bulletin too, which has been.
Yes.
To it, which is great.
Put those in.
Yeah.
Right.
I think that kind of content will help.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, Bob, you're back.
So, um, the same three reports to, um, highlight for Concord Public Schools. And, um, I'll start with. Bear with me one second. Start with the FY22, um, close for CPS. Just to highlight a couple of the significant, uh, items, uh, that I think are worth highlighting. The, um, the budget was helped by a significant large prepayment of 550,000 of special ed tuitions, which were permitted to do, uh, by national law. At the end of FY21, that enabled, um, that savings to be applied towards some other costs that were incurred during the year, uh, both, both kind of in the special ed, um, area. Some of those were for tutors and for assistance. Um, and, and the other piece was for medical therapeutic contract services. There were some other transfers. Um, those were more, um, accounting oriented, uh, to align with Desi's reporting standards. They sometimes will tell us to classify certain positions in a certain, uh, way for the end to be a report that caused some of these to move between categories. So that's kind of noise uh, on the report. Um, the more substantive issues are, are highlighted in the report there. Looking at the, um, the revolving fund balances. Uh, the food service revolving fund, again, like the, um, the region has a healthy balance. Again, um, also helped by the free lunches that were offered by the federal government last year, by the state government this year. There is a very small athletics revolving fund, um, which, um, funds the activities of the middle school. And there is a, there's a balance there of just under 58,000. The preschool revolving fund, we typically zero out every year. That, um, program is costs are significantly more than the revenues and expenses that are listed there. This is just the portion that flows through revolving fund. And so I, I think the, um, the balances for food service are, are relatively healthy. The, the circuit breaker funds, unlike the, the, the regional district circuit breaker funds, we were not able to carry over the maximum, uh, allowable balance. The, um, the carryover balance was, um, 463,000. Which was, uh, about 230,000. Uh, there's a, there's a typo on the report. It should say 230,000, not 23,000. Uh, 230,000 below the maximum allowable carryover is 690,000. So we've had to use some current year circuit breaker to, to help, um, offset some special education costs. Um, that's something that too can, over time can shift. So you can build up a larger balance. Um, this doesn't just happen in one year. The goal would be if we could to carry over the maximum circuit breaker balance. So I'd say, you know, overall, we're in, we're in decent shape for, um, for CPS. Little bit more sturdy at the region. Another thing that, um, we'll, we'll actually go over this in the guidelines, um, presentation. So I'll skip that. So that's, I'll, I'll pause there for FY22. I'll move on to FY23. And again, I, I think the, the for FY23, I'll keep it very high level. We're still receiving grant approvals. Um, and as we receive those grant approvals, we apply them to things that are sitting in the general fund and relieve the general fund. So, um, again, I think the December report will have a lot more clarity, um, in terms of what we present to you. We haven't had significant amount of transfers at this point, um, but as we move forward, we'll look to, to align expenses, transfer from, uh, places that have surpluses to areas that need funding. And I'm going to move on to the, um, I think I wanted to spend a little bit more time on the FinCom presentations, uh, guideline presentation. If we can move to that.
Quick question. I was going to ask this at the region as well. Um, how, how do things like that are very, I don't know, uh, unpredictable right now? Diesel and utilities. How are we factoring that? And like, I don't even know how diesel works. Do we have like a contract or do we buy, you know?
We buy through, um, I forget the name of the supplier, but it's the same person I used in my last district. They're kind of the go-to company for deliveries. Um, we have a it's, it's a market price. We don't necessarily go out to bid. I think at this point, if we did, we'd be locked into a higher price.
Yeah.
Um, so, um, that's where we are right now and.
Has it been fluctuating? I mean, is it high compared to last year? That's I'm just wondering. I mean.
It was high last year.
Right.
It's.
Is it coming down?
Been a little bit, um, normalized. I mean, it's nowhere near what it was two years ago.
Right.
Three years ago, but right. So I'd say it's still elevated, but not, not as bad as last year.
And then what do you anticipate for heating this winter? That's natural gas, right?
Yeah, I, I believe we have, I, I will check.
I mean, I, if it's, if it's not significant, then that's great. And I won't worry about.
I believe we have contracts for that. I, I would have to check.
Okay.
My last district, we would contract for three years through a broker.
Yeah.
The supply comes from, um, the people who own the pipes. And. Yeah. And then we can, we can purchase, um, from a supplier.
Right.
After a contract and typically use a broker for that. Um, yeah, I don't know if we'd want to do long-term rates right now.
No, I.
Yeah.
Is it a worry? That's on, yeah.
It's a little bit of a roll of the dice. When you're in a high price environment, like two years ago would have been, oh, if we knew it was going to be where it is now, we'll just lock in a.
Yeah.
Get a five-year contracts.
And we get all of our electricity from Conifer Municipal Light Plant, right?
Electricity from municipal light, um, heat is not.
No, right. But their rates are pretty reasonable compared to some of the things that are coming down the pipe for, from National Grid or other vendors, I think, whatever.
Yeah, I, I know. I see personal notification of a large increase.
Yep. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. So there's, there's challenges, inflationary challenges we, we will manage, um, and, um, have to respond to.
Great.
Um, so in terms of a forecast, um, this is again, um, five-year view. We do, we, we have factored in, um, some things we've seen in FY23 into the forecast and we'll talk about that on the next slide. But overall, we see, um, here, uh, 4.2% increase in our expenditures uh, in 24 and then 3.1, 2.13 and three as we move forward. So a little bit of a, uh, higher number in FY24. The grant funding revolving and circuit breaker there, we've, um, forecast to be steady. We don't, I would say, have the flexibility to leverage more circuit breaker like we did at the region. I would not recommend that given our carryover is not the, the maximum amount. But, um, you, you'll see a, an increase in circuit breaker from 24 to 25. And some of that's factoring in that our increase in special education tuitions, um, leads to more circuit breaker funding. Uh, so those are at the bottom, you know, the, the top piece is total expenditures, uh, regardless of funding source, our total spending. And when you, when you subtract our, our grant funding revolving funding and circuit breaker, which help offset the general fund impact. You have the increases at the bottom, so 4.3, 3.3. And those are higher than the overall expenditure increase because, um, the growth in the overall expenditures is less than the growth in those funding sources. Erin, next slide, please. And so to highlight the, the, kind of the key drivers, um, in FY24, um, it, it's contract services, which is primarily transportation, um, and tuition. So the tuitions of eight percent, um, it's two things. It's a 14% inflationary increase in private school tuitions. Uh, it's netted with some students, um, transferring from the, um, Concord Public Schools District eighth graders moving up to ninth grade. Most of the tuition monies there are private schools. So most of them are getting the 14% increase. We're getting a 4% increase on students going to the collaborative. But again, most of those dollars are private school, which is why the increase is eight percent. The teacher salaries of four percent. Um, if you look at what, what I, we developed a model, I get, um, basically a data dump of staff from, um, Denise, uh, HR director and looked at current steps in lanes and if every teacher were to advance a step, um, in the following year and to get the cost of living increase, what that increase was. And then I factored in for retirements. Um, so that's four percent. If we get less retirements, it'll be more than four percent. If we get more retirements, it'll be uh, a little bit less than four percent. So that's a variable just based on the number of people that retire that we also have to kind of manage around.
I'm guessing four percent is about a historical average.
It was a safe guess.
So, and we'll have, as we move forward in the budget, I mean, the first budget presentation is December 6th. It's not like it's going to, we're, we're going to have a, like a huge, we'll have some visibility to retirements, but you know, they'll, they'll, they'll still be things that happen between December 6th and the second half of the year. So we'll have to kind of put a stake in the ground and, and make our best guess. The non-teacher salaries, um, doesn't have the steps in lane. There is some steps, but it doesn't have the, the lane progression. Um, that includes, some new support staff we needed to add this year to support our, um, students on IEPs. And then it includes cost of living. So in FY26, a couple of things I just wanted to highlight is we factored in the, um, kind of the consolidation into a single middle school and the, um, savings that we'd realized of 500,000, um, we anticipate, um, in, in, to be a non-teacher salaries. And in, um, other expenses which, um, will further define, but the bulk of that is in, in non-teacher salaries. Next slide, please. Oh, so I, I think that's it. I, I did, um, so I'll pause there and see if there's any questions on the, on the CPS forecast. I also wanted to make you aware, there was a memo included in your documentation that, um, we, we're basically responding to the FinCom with specific information that they asked from us. So that's providing specific information they asked. If, you know, I'd, I'd say you can read it. If, you know, I'd, I'd say you can read it, um, but you know, maybe of interest, I didn't talk about the Esther funds in my fund balances. That would be one additional thing you could look at and see what we're carrying over with Esther, but, but the rest of that, we're pretty much, um, trying to provide some data.
That's great.
I think I just want to comment and remind you, we took some risks last year when we got to guideline at CPS and enough of them came true that this budget's tighter than some days is comfortable. Um, we're having to really pay attention, not that we don't usually, but really look for reallocations already, which feels really early in the year to be doing that when student needs arise or other things happen that, um, we, we gave our contingency up to close guideline. Remember the hundred and fifty thousand in contingency, we took it to get to guideline. Like we're definitely feeling some of that. So while we're putting to paper a three percent increase, that could be hard to come to. So we're gonna, we have a lot of work to do before we can tell you what we're gonna bring, but I just need to say that out loud, that it's been noticeable, the, the tight, tighter field and the risks we took for sure between tuitions, class size, eliminating the contingency, we've definitely, definitely seen a tighter budget.
Thank you. That was great. Thank you.
Any more questions for Bob? All right. Okay. And now we're going to go to, so we are going to add, um, a vote. What was he gonna add?
Yeah.
Get, yeah. Why don't we get that, um, out of the way? I would somebody entertain, I guess, a motion to approve.
I moved that Alexa Anderson is the delegate. Can, oh, I'm in it.
And Tracy would be the alternate. Anyone want to move that?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks for entertaining that. And then the next piece, um, are two, uh, trips that are coming back this year for the first time in years. These are real kind of rite of passage trips, I would say, that, um, have been very sorely missed these past few years. So I'll turn it over to Lori.
Yeah, and I'm quickly gonna turn it over to the folks who were willing to zoom with us at this hour. Um, so the middle school is proposing a return to two opportunities that we last talked about in twenty nineteen, only to not have them happen, uh, the annual trip to Washington DC by the eighth grade. Um, we'd like to bring that back to you and, uh, we are definitely acknowledging the policy asks for a first discussion, preliminary approval, and then second, the return from COVID to get these trips back online is forcing us to expedite a bit. So with your willingness, we, we are asking approval tonight and we will get back on track with first and second, um, for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Uh, so Mr. Cameron's on to talk with us about DC. Uh, and then the bands typically looked at a New York City trip. Um, so June is for DC earlier in the year for New York. And so Mr. Halpani is here to talk about that. We probably should do them one at a time and open it up with DC. I think that's good with you, Alexa, and Mr. Cameron can take it over. Hello, Mr. Cameron.
Hi. Good evening. Okay.
Overview of the trip?
Sure. So I guess we'll start in a place where, um, I've done some due diligence, uh, working with our sister school in Carlisle. Carlisle Middle School has gone through capital tours um, the last few years. Um, I did have an opportunity to have discussions with four different, uh, touring companies. And, um, I was pretty excited to commit, um, to a possible trip through capital tours, which again, uh, Carlisle has traveled through capital tours as recent as this past June, um, because they have a smaller, um, group that goes, um, they were able to actually, um, last year's eighth graders and Carlisle was act, was actually able to head down to DC. Our proposed dates are Wednesday, June seventh through Saturday, June tenth. Uh, so we continue to have a trip that is four days, three nights, which is pretty much recommended for a group our, our size. Um, I've submitted a proposed itinerary that has, um, a focus on social justice and cultural competency. Uh, the approximate price is about twelve hundred a student, um, which includes airfare, hotel and all meals. Uh, the last price, um, of a trip that we had all set to go, but we didn't end up taking, um, fall of two thousand nineteen for the June twenty twenty trip, uh, was only about a hundred dollars less. Um, there is all, there's already a scholarship request form that I would make available, um, pretty much in the next forty-eight hours with your permission. Um, that would be given to families along with an informational night that Capital Tours would be with me in the Sanborn Auditorium, um, meeting with all eighth grade families, uh, to discuss not only the trip, the educational opportunities, um, but the opportunity to engage, um, in a very confidential way with any scholarship requests. Uh, refund information is, uh, going to be of course, uh, something that is very important and part of our informational night. Um, Massachusetts and Capital Tours is a Massachusetts company, um, has a very recent law on the books that we have to offer, um, a protection plan, um, that would run about sixty dollars per student that even if one of our students, the night before, um, we leave for the trip, um, gets COVID, they would receive almost a one hundred percent refund. Um, other than that, it gets a little bit complicated. Um, if they take out the sixty dollar policy and say, um, I think it has to be forty-eight hours prior to, um, us leaving if a family just changes their mind. I think that's something like seventy percent back. I'm gonna pause there. Uh, that's pretty much the kind of overview that I was planning on giving the committee, um, at this time.
Thanks, Justin. I think the itinerary is, is really robust and excellent. I don't know what the trips looked like in the past, but this one looked pretty exceptional to me. Anyone else have questions or comments?
I was just following the Carlisle trip and they don't even make them wear shirts.
They didn't what?
All the same shirts.
Oh, oh.
I mean, they have to wear shirts. But no, they're Carlisle. I mean, if you go back through somebody's Twitter, um, it looks really incredible. Yeah. And they went to the National Museum of American History and Culture, which I don't think, Justin, has that ever been on your itinerary in the past?
Uh, it is this year.
I know. I see that, which is fantastic.
Yeah, it's been very hard to get into.
I know.
In the last five years or so.
Yeah.
But that's one of the first things that we engaged, um, with in the different, um, doing our due diligence of the four different companies that we engaged with in this last couple of weeks. Um, one of the first things that was mentioned is our commitment, um, for cultural competency and social justice. Um, and Capital Tours heard that and they look to be delivering on, um, you know, that commitment that we have as a district.
Fantastic. It's great.
Excited for it to come back to eighth grade.
This looks incredible. I've had a question on the fundraising. I know I did. I noticed it in the New York City trip. Is that also, do you also do fundraising for the eighth grade DC trip? And if so, do those in both of them, do they offset the cost for everybody? For how does, how does that work as far as impacting the price?
Yeah. So I can only speak about the DC trip. Um, there's two types of fundraising that we're looking to do. Um, one would be more type of, um, events that I want to partner and have discussions with my PTG on, um, and those events would help, um, fund a scholarship pool, um, and scholarship funds for this, for families who apply for scholarship. And then there'll be individual, um, ways that students can earn money towards their trip. Uh, historically at the middle school, we've done the selling of like, um, I think cookie batter and you know, candles and things like that. So there'll be two opportunities. Um, one for a student and who may have an op, opportu- an opportunity to reduce their family price. And then opportunities where we come together as a community, uh, for fundraising event that would help build a scholarship fund for those families who apply for scholarship.
Thank you.
And is there the option that, because I think in the past they had an option that, that families could make an additional donation, like there might've been a suggested amount. You know, if you're willing to make an additional donation of fifty dollars or something like that, is that something you're going to also put on the form or no?
So I think that's going to be a part of the events that we offer.
Okay.
Opportunity for families, um, who may not even be available or coming to an event to make a donation. Um, and we're looking at a couple of different events. Student Council also has expressed interest um, in hosting an event, um, and then the PTG, I just want to make sure that we connect. Um, you know, because they have some fundraising, um, events coming up as well.
Awesome. Great. Like a great trip.
Thank you.
Yeah. So, uh, Mr. Halpani, can you turn us over to New York City and talk us through that?
Yeah, I'd be glad to. Thank you all for your time tonight and, um, and for hearing us out on this tip, trip proposal. We're really excited to bring it to you. So, um, a few years ago, the Concord Band, the Wind Ensemble did a New York City trip. And before COVID, like really right before the COVID pandemic lockdown happened, they were planning a, uh, Canada trip. And that obviously didn't happen, but, um, we decided now that we're starting trips again, we would kind of dial it back and keep it domestic. Go for another city trip, um, since we've kind of done that before and we know what we're getting into. We're once again going to use Encore Tours, which is who we've used for the other one, um, the other trips in the past. They were great to us when the lockdown happened and parents were refunded money. Or, um, some families even still have credits that remain from the Canada trip. So, and we asked in some of the parents that have siblings, that can actually be transferred to those younger siblings as well.
That's great.
The ensembles that are involved are going to be all of the select groups. So it's the after-school wind ensemble, the after-school jazz band, as well as the honors choir and the string orchestra. Uh, and we are also, it initially, we were hoping to help reduce costs by inviting Carlisle, but then we also said, that's just a nice idea anyway. So, um, Carlisle School is going to be involved as well, which will help kind of create some bonds with those instrumental music students, actually not even just all the music students, uh, before they get to CCHS. So they are seeking approval separately from this, but it will be one combined trip. Um, we're looking at in total about one hundred and fifty students involved and about a ten to one, um, chaperone student ratio. So there'll be ten students to one chaperone. Um, we will be gone from, we're proposing April twelfth until the fourteenth, which would be a Wednesday through Friday, missing three days of school and obviously two nights. And this is involving grades six through eight. The itinerary itself will be pretty exciting. It's a mix of some performance opportunities. We're hoping to have an exchange performance with a, a New York school. That's still to be determined. Um, Encore Agencies is waiting for the actual approval to happen before they move forward with reaching out to a school that we can partner with to do the exchange, uh, performance. But right now we're, we're brainstorming ideas in terms of Brooklyn or the Bronx, or you, even just right downtown in New York City. Um, there will also be a leadership or sort of inspirational workshop for all of the students involved. And there will be all of the sightseeing opportunities, which will be a, a big educational component. We'll visit One World Trade again. We'll see a Broadway play, a Broadway musical, potentially Wicked, and go see the New York Phil. So it's loaded with activities, uh, because we don't want the middle schoolers to have too much downtime. So a jam-packed trip and you know, it's all you can see in New York City within three days. Um, breakfast and dinner will be included, but the students will get their own, uh, lunches when we're in the city. Um, the cost right now is estimated at twelve ninety-nine per student, which is steep, but that, a lot of that has to do with, you know, just inflation costs and gas prices. We've done everything to try and wiggle the cost at the most affordable because we do know it's a big ask of families. Um, and we're, we're satisfied with that number, but we also have some fundraising involved. Oh, in that twelve ninety-nine is, uh, trip insurance. So it's, it's already included in case anything should happen. And, um, that covers their instruments as well, is what I'm told. Um, fundraising opportunities, um, directly through Encore, each student does have access to a GoFundMe page where they can kind of reach out to their own friends and family and their own network and fund their individual trip. But then we also have some group fundraising opportunities that are coming up. Uh, our parent group, the Concord Amp, the Association of Music Parents, um, they hold an annual auction, which is a big fundraiser for us. And, and we're also going to be holding a raffle because the Encore Tour Agency provides a domestic flight, which we can give away in, or in order to promote the trip and, and to raise some funds. Students who participate in any of the fundraising activities that we have will get the, I don't know how the best way to explain this, but if any student participates in fundraising, they get a blanket, um, reduce of cost. So let's pretend that every student participates, then every student that participated will get a reduced cost based on the funds that come in for the groups. If ten students decide, you know what? I don't want to fundraise with the group, um, those students wouldn't have their cost reduced by the fundraising options. Um, I do need to double, double check this, but I believe that our Concord Amp also has, uh, a block fund already allocated to help reduce the cost, um, for every student in general as well. I just don't have that number handy right now. Um, I think that's about all I have to talk about the trip. Are there any questions?
No.
Very, very impressive.
Yeah. Sounds like a great trip.
We're excited. Thank you.
Yeah.
And there may be a Concord resident that might be interested if you're going to Wicked. I'm thinking Gregory McGuire might be interested if you are actually going to Wicked.
Yeah, um.
He's your neighbor. Oh.
He's a neighbor.
Yeah.
That would be really cool.
I know.
I might hit you up on that.
Shoot me an email, Paul. You and I chatted several times.
Thank you guys so much. This is really thorough and helpful and exciting.
Must.
Very exciting.
All right. So can we entertain a motion to approve the grade eight Washington DC trip and the CMS New York City trip for musically inclined students?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Have a good night.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your support. Thank you so much.
Sure.
All right. Thank you guys for a great meeting before we move into our executive.
Yes, I do the DC.
Oh, separate?
No, she did the both. Yeah, she did the both.
Jotting my note down about Wicked.
Sorry.
Um, and with that, I think I would entertain a motion for members to stay in our executive session if someone has the language in front of them, because I can't read it.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Guys.
Good night.
You both.
Oh, yes.
Yeah. See you soon.
Yes, I will see you on Friday.
All right, I'm
You're coming. You're coming.
We're still live. The fourteenth, I'm coming.
See? Paisha.
Paisha. Get it out there, Bob. Oh.
All right. You want to read it while we?
Move that the Concord School, we enter into executive session under purpose three of the open meeting law to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect to, on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body and not return to
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do we roll call? It's a roll call.
Yeah.
Um, I will entertain a roll call. Anderson, aye.
Randy, aye.
Rank, and I. Marado, aye.
Thank you, everybody, and to the public. Have a great night.
Are we moving or?
I think we should move. Yeah, just so they can dismantle.
Yes.